I'd like to call the Celine City Council meeting to order. If you please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Copies of the agenda are on the back table along with hearing devices, and we encourage you to sign in in the back as well. Role call this evening, council members present are council members Kamara Sulek, CEO Delorko, Mayor Protem Dillon, council members Girba, Rice, and Marl. From city staff, we have city manager O'Toole, clerk Royal, city engineer Humphris, and community development director Harrington. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? I would like to add one brief special presentation that will immediately precede the report from our healthcare task force, and that's the only other addition that I'm aware of. So if someone would be so inclined to move to approve the agenda as amended, that would be great.
Move as amended.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Kamara Sulek. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences, so we'll proceed to the first public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward at this time and make common or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but of course not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Please.
Good evening. The mayor?
Hold on just one second. We'll pause your time. Light not working?
Oh.
Make sure the green light is illuminated at the base. Touch the button that says push.
Oh, finally. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council friends. My name is Chang Ming Fan, local residence, local social entrepreneur. I just talked at the web meeting, talk about the plan for energy plan followed by our governor and Mr. Biden, the president. And now talk about the master plan versus strategic plan, which is the wonderful meeting last time I participated, strategic plan plus the master plan was very, very well. But unfortunately, at the beginning time, I'm the only one. So there is a problem. We have gap. Number two is that I think that this strategic plan should go first rather than follow the master plan. However, Mr. Mayor and council is really adaptive. I encourage my fellow citizen, what is it, Celineers, should really come here. This is your government. This is my government. And therefore, a lot of things I have to say, we took advantage of the freedom. We abuse the freedom by not care. By the time I come here, I see people yell at the mayor, yell at the council, but when you had the chance to talk, you're not here. I just want to speak out. I might insult any of you, raise my voice, doesn't mean I want to scare you. But I really thank you so much for this purpose, for your services. But right now, strategic plan got to make it clear. The language, the key word should be climate. Climate is not my own business. Everybody's business. We see clearly, climate change deteriorate, salt initiative, with the mayor and Mr. Jack CEO support, never stop, and getting more and more input. I will present it to the University Michigan CEE, Southern Engineering Environment, to also participate all of the meeting. I see we're doing the right thing. Thank you, Jack. Thank you, mayor, and thank you, council. But we have to work together. It is our responsibility. The best way is zero carbon footprint. What does that means? No digging, no concrete, no heavy equipment, no damage for any environmental things, salt initiative, or S A L T, Celine Everly Tower, or just out, A L T, Everly Tower, Bell Tower, have two islands, we can build that. But you have to, Celine have to lead, have to have the experience. And therefore, my time is over. Thank you.
Thank you, Chang Ming. Are there additional citizen comments on agenda items this evening? Please.
Hi, Jen Harmout, Celine Citizen, future city council member. I want to support the extension of the healthcare task force. So I'm just here to state that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments on agenda items? I would defer to the city clerk. Were there any written comments provided in advance of tonight's meeting in which the individual wanted their remarks read at this time? Easy enough. Then we will proceed to three special presentations. Give me just a moment.
Is this on? Good? Okay. Mr. Beardsley, would you like to join us up front? We're going to take a few moments this evening to recognize some outstanding public servants who are retiring from official positions within the city of Celine. And first up is my friend, Mr. Beardsley. And Mr. Beardsley is leaving us after 14 distinguished years on the planning commission. And as most of you know, the planning commission has a pretty profound impact on the city of Celine and its future. Bill has been one of our more active and vocal members. He served as chair of that body, and his contributions specifically to the planning commission are innumerable. So my office, in conjunction with our PR generalist and city clerk, thought it appropriate to recognize him on this occasion and to present him with a letter of recognition. So let me read it in its totality. City of Celine, in recognition of William Beardsley. Whereas William Beardsley and his wife Wendy, who's with us this evening, have raised their children in the Celine community and have been active in numerous civic organizations and causes. William spent his professional career as a highly regarded banker. And whereas William has served the Celine community for over 14 years on numerous cities, on city of Celine, excuse me, boards and commissions. And whereas during his tenure, Bill's insight and thoughtfulness on developments in Celine have resulted in the creation of places and projects that serve the city of Celine and its residents well. And whereas his service under mayors Driscoll and Marl included appointments to the zoning board of appeals, code review committee, planning commission, LDFA, TIFA, and EDC. And whereas his appointment to the planning commission included the adoption of several of the city of Celine master plans, including the 2017 master plan and now the 2023 master plan. And whereas Bill has contributed to the adoption of numerous variances and countless ordinance changes as a highly engaged and thoughtful member of the planning commission, code review committee, and zoning board of appeals. And whereas his contributions to the city of Celine will have a lasting impact on the codes and ordinances by which the citizens and stakeholders of this community are served. Now therefore, the Celine City Council on behalf of the citizens of Celine do hereby thank William Beardsley for his dedicated service to the Celine community and the city of Celine with sincere best wishes for a happy, enjoyable life for all your future endeavors. And I set my hand and seal to this document on the 18th day of December 2023. Bill, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to serve the community, and it was my pleasure to do so. The way he reads it, it sounds like it was a lot of work. It didn't feel like a lot of work. It felt like doing the right thing for the community. I look at the work that council members put in and the mayor, and I know the intensity of that work is so significant. Planning commission is a really great opportunity to get to know the community and help out people, these groups. I would encourage folks to get involved in ZBH Council. Thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure working with staff, and thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just conclude by saying I appreciate Bill's remarks about encouraging folks to serve on boards and commissions, and we are looking to fill several vacancies. And if you're looking for a model of how to conduct yourself, once you're on a board or commission, Mr. Beardsley is really the gold standard because he came prepared, he was inquisitive, he was prone to help broach compromise and to actually produce tangible things for the betterment of the Celine community. So I hope his example serves as a model for years to come. Bill, Wendy, thank you very much. At this time, can I invite council members Kamara Sulek and Delorko forward? So this is also the last meeting for my colleagues and friends, Mr. Delorko and Mr. Kamara Sulek. And as it is our tradition here to recognize our outgoing council members with plaques of recognition. And so similar to what I did with Mr. Beardsley, let me read these in their totality, present them to both gentlemen, and then I would welcome some remarks from both Kevin and Jim. So let me start with council member Delorko. And this reads, the city of Celine, James M. Delorko. Whereas James Delorko has served the city of Celine as a council member from January 2020 through December 2023. And whereas during the past four years, James Delorko has served with distinction as a city member or delegate to the following bodies, code review committee, environmental commission, and Celine Fire Board. And whereas his passion and commitment to the city has helped to make Celine a stronger and more vibrant community. Now therefore, be it resolved that Celine City Council on behalf of the citizens of Celine do hereby thank James Delorko for his contributions to the welfare of our community with sincere best wishes and for continued success in all of his future endeavors. And this is presented by the Celine City Council on behalf of the Celine citizens, on behalf, excuse me, of the citizens of Celine, December 18th, 2023.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. And let me read council member Kamara Sulek's plaque. So this is also addressed, city of Celine, Kevin Kamara Sulek. Whereas Kevin Kamara Sulek has served the city of Celine as a council member also from January 2020 through December 2023. And whereas during the past four years, Kevin Kamara Sulek has served with distinction as a member or delegate to the following bodies, Arts and Culture Committee, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee, and of course, the Celine Youth Council. And whereas his passion and commitment to the city has helped to make Celine a stronger and more vibrant community. Now therefore, be it resolved that Celine City Council on behalf of the citizens of Celine do hereby thank Kevin Kamara Sulek for his many contributions to the welfare of our community with sincere best wishes for continued success in all his future endeavors. And again, this is presented by the Celine City Council on behalf of the citizens of Celine, December 18th, 2023.
Not a requirement?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Everyone, it's certainly been an honor and a privilege to serve the Celine community. When I first got elected, I had no idea what I would be in for. Of course, this was ahead of the pandemic. Shortly after I was elected, the pandemic hit, and city staff, all of us, had to pull together to figure out a new way of doing things, and that was a very trying time. And many of our small business owners were really struggling. And if it wasn't for these good people in this room and the aid of some federal grants coming down from the government, I don't know how we would have all pulled through it. We also embarked on how to deal with our wastewater treatment plant, and that was a long process moving forward. So I'm glad to see the shovels are in the ground. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is this on?
It is.
All right. I thought I'd be louder. It's different up there on the dais. But I'm flattered to receive this and to have served the community in volunteering, I believe, in giving back. And as Jim Sowell said, with the oncoming of the epidemic, we had to be very resourceful and look into ourselves and how we can not just keep ourselves safe and help our own health, but our neighbors, our fellow citizens, and then conducting government. And fortunately, we were able to really gain some wonderful new staff that have done a terrific, a terrific job. And working alongside council and staff and the citizens, I think we are, we've made some major improvements, not just in the wastewater treatment plant, in our DPW and other capital improvement projects. I feel comfortable and happy that we are on a spectacular trajectory, and thank you all. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your leadership.
Okay, moving right along on tonight's agenda, we do have a formal presentation from our healthcare task force, so I would invite the chair of our healthcare task force forward. I believe we have the PowerPoint on the screen, and you may begin when ready. We appreciate you being here this evening.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. This is brief in the interest of everyone's time. Where's it going to go?
It's the space bar.
Thank you. So as we went over earlier this year, we did develop a strategic plan for the healthcare task force where we focused in on what we had hoped to accomplish in this year, that included looking at data from previous surveys, building out a social media presence, creating a healthcare resource repository, continued communication with healthcare organizations, and exploring the healthy cities or community initiatives that were going on around us. We met some challenges this year. One of the biggest ones was attrition. Several people stepped down. We did unexpectedly lose a member of the task force a few months ago, which has dwindled the number of people on the committee to about six plus our interns. We've had difficulty meeting quorum on a monthly basis, which means that we could meet and discuss things, but no major decisions were made. And we had some communication failures. They were identified and communicated to the city, the task force emails not getting out to anybody who's not a city employee, which meant that there were important information that wasn't passed along, and we had to create some workarounds. We did however have one success I would like to highlight, and that is we have spent a significant amount of time building that healthcare resource repository. It is currently a draft and being edited. The task force has been intentional that the repository is inclusive of the needs of all citizens of Celine and the surrounding communities. We are collecting the information, and as we have, it's painted a robust picture of the resources that are available to meet the health and wellness needs of the community. And I think that really it's more about creating awareness and getting access to those resources, and that's the goal of finishing up the repository and getting it published and out to the community as best as possible. So we are asking for that brief extension into the first quarter of next year, and the goal is to get this to a point where we feel that we are ready to have it published, whether it's on the city council, the city's website, or printed and available for people to pick it up. It is a living document, and there's a lot of links in there, so it will be best shared electronically. But we do understand that some people may want it printed so that they can have access to it whenever they want. We have spent a significant amount of time talking about healthy community initiatives as well, researching what's been going on in the communities around us, the five healthy communities. We had some collaboration meetings with the Celine Rec Center on the walking path project and what we could do to take that forward. And then some, there was interest by the interns in learning about blue zones, and they did bring some of that information back to us as well. So the task force is asking for an extension into the first quarter of '24. We want to finalize and publish the repository and prepare a recommendation for the city council regarding next steps, including a transition of leadership because I will be stepping down at the end of that extension. So do you have any questions for me?
Very good. Appreciate the abbreviated report. And just to be clear, I think when the repository is presented to city council likely in March, and we receive your other recommendations, as you and I have discussed, and as I've discussed with several of my council colleagues and some community members, I think at that time we'll also present restructuring the healthcare task force to have a slightly broader focus maybe on community wellness. Please comment on that, yeah?
Absolutely, and we talked about this briefly. I think that, I didn't want to go into detail about that tonight. I think that that's better to come in a formal recommendation at the end of the extension. But I do think that there is an interest in a broader health and wellness approach to, and I think it will create a vector for longevity for this task force becoming a committee, because there's so much work to be done, and there's a lot of grant funding available for a lot of the initiatives that have come up and been discussed. So laying the foundation and creating a path for longevity and sustainability will give us an avenue to look into that grant funding, follow the application process, and maybe be successful in bringing in some additional funds to support a lot of the fantastic ideas that have come out of the task force thus far. I think that's been a challenge as there's, as a think tank, it's been a great group of people that come up with fantastic ideas, but it's like launching forward into those next steps to really make things permanent and sustainable. So that will, we will have a more formal recommendation about considering a restructuring, as you say, into like a health and wellness centered group.
And the other thing you and I discussed that I just want to make council aware of is it's very likely at our first meeting of the year, I will ask that this body appoint a second liaison from city council to the healthcare improvement task force, primarily because I think there's a benefit to having somebody who has not been part of the work these last two and a half years, look at the repository, the document that should be provided to council, to ensure that it is accessible, that it can be clearly understood by members of the community.
Yes.
I just think that having somebody from the outside would be helpful to you all.
Yes, and as we talked about, and we will, we will share more of that in detail when we bring it to you in its completion. But when I said that it's inclusive, it means including that the document and its sources is ADA accessible, that it's something that can be accessible no matter what the needs of the viewer are. And also inclusive, right? We don't, we want to make sure that we're hitting on the needs of, you know, age, religion, gender, whatever your needs are as a citizen as far as reaching out to healthcare resources, that we're including as much of that as possible. It will also come with disclaimers that it is not exhaustive because we, there may be things that we've overlooked, and we will always be welcome to adding more to it. So, but we want to make sure that we got as much as possible. And it's, it's kind of layered, right? What's right here in our community, what's accessible through reaching out to county resources? Washington County Health Department has a pretty robust resource allocation as well, and maybe some other things that people didn't think of. I know the origins of the task force were to bring brick and mortar healthcare into the community and the pandemic and the way that healthcare has shifted, the challenges that organizations are facing financially and staffing wise. They can't put a building in our community if they can't staff it, as evidenced by the lab at U of M that is open intermittently because they can't get staff to function in that lab. So like, we have kind of shifted our focus to think bigger picture, and how can we encourage and bring resources to people that they may not know have been sitting right here, they just aren't well advertised or vocalized that they exist?
Thank you. Mr. CEO is the liaison to the healthcare task force. Do you care to make any comments at this time?
No, I don't, Your Honor. Thank you. I think it's pretty well covered.
Okay. Are there questions for our guests this evening? Easy enough. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays, everybody.
Please thank the members of the committee too for their continued work and look forward to the final analysis in March. We've come now to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will not only be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Is there a motion?
Move as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Delorko. I'll get you on the next one, Mr. Kamara Sulek. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item 23-251, 2023 master plan adoption. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the 2023 master plan and to adopt or not to adopt resolution number 23-251 for the 2023 master plan update.
Move to acknowledge and to adopt.
Move by Girba to acknowledge and to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Dillon. Mr. Harrington, as the director of community development, would you like to begin? And then before we open it up for questions, I'll defer to council member Girba, who is the liaison to the planning commission.
Absolutely.
And was on the steering committee for the 2023 master plan.
Absolutely. The plan itself is over 100 pages, so I'm going to keep it pretty high level here. It's just over a year in the making. The master plan for the public's edification is a document that we have to evaluate every five years. The overarching purpose is to plan the city's development and land use going forward for the next five-year period. The most important document within this document, legally speaking, is the future land use map, and there are specific requirements to make zoning conformity. It comes into play when you're talking about redevelopment and development of sites. So to go over the 2023 process, we started with a steering committee of planning commission members. We chose four topic areas to really focus the bulk of our update efforts on. That was downtown, transportation, environment, sustainability, and resilience, and then housing. We held two engagement sessions and a survey that received a few hundred responses before beginning text updates. After we began the text updates and had a general understanding of the direction, we held another public engagement session where we got more feedback. We released the draft earlier this year and then waited the 63-day public comment requirement from the state of Michigan. We then carefully reviewed this draft throughout six, five to six planning commission meetings over the past couple months. And then just go over the big changes. We have a revised future land use map. It's mainly cleaning up some errors from the 2017 plan, and there are some that had been kind of legacy errors, that we can call them, you know, some mislabelings of things that we finally kind of cleared up in this plan. And then updating with developments that have occurred, such as Maple Oaks used to be part of an industrial park, but that is now residential, obviously, so amending that in the maps as well. And then there were a couple other ones that we made that were genuinely impactful, such as the hospital campus. We revised our subareas, and that will help us with targeted planning efforts. So it's essentially smaller classifications of areas within the city. So we now have one for downtown, one for East Michigan Avenue, and one for West Michigan Avenue. They all previously kind of blended together within other subgroups, so wasn't as specific as it likely should be for a city of our size. We changed our residential land use guide to form-based descriptions, so really describing the end results of what we want to see. So rather than talking about an intensity, we're talking about the product setbacks, things like that, in a much more nuanced and forward-thinking fashion, and definitely moving away from hyperbolic density numbers or things that just don't make sense for our community. We there's calls to reevaluate our residential development standards, but ultimately those items will have to come through the planning commission and the city council in order to be adopted, so you'll likely be seeing those in the coming years. There's calls to embolster our environmental protections when relations to new development, especially stormwater, wetlands, and woodlands. There's calls to reevaluate our SPA 1 district in the plan, which is that East Michigan Avenue corridor, and really looking critically at how we can better use the space along East Michigan Avenue. There's calls to bolster our non-motorized transportation efforts. And then lastly, and maybe most importantly, there's a very clear implementation matrix in the back of this plan. Previously, it was about two pages long and kind of vague overarching comments on how, you know, we all bring the zoning inconformity with the future land use map as is legally required. But this one goes a little bit further and provides steps about what we can actually do as a city staff as starting points. And our hope is to really track those steps and see, and maybe build some institutional knowledge about how do we actually achieve, you know, maybe a rezoning or getting allocations for a non-motorized transit, things like that. So my hope is that it's a great guiding piece of document for my department over the next five years, and that we'll be able to achieve a lot of these aspirational goals we've set out for ourselves in the plan.
Very good. Mr. Girba, anything you'd like to add as the planning commission liaison?
Mr. Harrington covered quite a bit of it. I do appreciate from the perspective of Mr. Harrington and Planner Auerbach, their dedication to reviewing this master plan, as the mayor has mentioned even at our planning commission. We've not had a thorough review of this plan as has been attempted at this point, including the implementation aspect of it in the time that I've been on council. And so I appreciate your attack on this and actually bringing it about to achieve what we want to see in our community. Some of the things that I felt were really addressed in this new plan is historical aspect, addressing those things, trying to keep the character of our community, but realizing that we have to address density by addressing that in different ways of assessing it and looking at it. I believe this plan moving forward for this period of time helps us come to a more reality of what's happening in this community and also what we want to see happen moving forward. And I look forward to how you actually implement the implementation plan. So thank you very much for what you've done, and with that, I believe that's all I have to say.
Very good. Well, let me just add, as the second liaison to the planning commission, I think by any objective measure, this process that brought us here this evening was the most thoughtful, thorough, inclusive, and comprehensive approach to a master plan revision or update that I have certainly been a part of since my tenure as a council member began in 2009, excuse me. So those remarks, of course, echo what my colleague, Mr. Girba, just articulated. I also think this is by far the most forward-thinking document, and I have no doubt that it will serve the community very well during the next five years. So I will be enthusiastically voting in favor of the motion to acknowledge and to adopt. And I would also note that I think Mr. Harrington was so proud of his work, as of course he should be, that he decided to wear a sport jacket this evening.
I did indeed. I decided if I was going to dress up for you at any point, I'd be on a quarter zip.
Maybe next time.
Today would be the day.
Maybe next time we can get you in a tie and a pocket square, too.
We'll think about it. We'll think about it.
One step at a time.
All my ties are on zippers. I don't know if I should admit that.
Oh, boy. Well, we can talk about that after. Well, we can talk about that after. Are there questions for either Mr. Harrington or either of the two liaisons to the planning commission? Councilmember Rice?
No questions. I just wanted to make a comment that I, this is one of the most involved projects that I've seen since I've lived in Saline as far as interaction with the community, interaction with boards and commissions. We all had opportunities to review it at different stages, in different capacities. So I really truly appreciate that. I feel like we had lots of online surveys and responses, and people were really engaged. And I think this sort of sets the stage going forward for, you know, how we work projects and how we work interactions with the community. So I really appreciate that. I know you haven't even been able to capture all the interactions you've had, because I know that you've had a lot of personal one-on-one interactions as well, that you know, jotted in the summer, things like that. So just wanted to commit to that aspect as well.
Very good. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Kamira Sulek, please.
Yeah, I'm kind of blown away by this. All the pictures and, and charts and everything, it's really, it's really clear. And very impressive to put together this 500-page document, you know? It's very, well, it's big print, but this really sets everything forward. So I don't have any questions, and that's well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kamira Sulek. Any additional remarks from the dais this evening? No? Okay. Then we have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbot, seconded by Mayor Protem Dillon, to both acknowledge and to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it, the master plan for 2023 is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Harrington. We move on to agenda item 23-252, engineer design standards. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Engineer Humphris and to adopt or not to adopt the 2023 design, engineering design standards, excuse me.
Move to acknowledge and to adopt.
Moved by Gearbot to acknowledge and to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Seo. Engineer Humphris, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. That's, that's a little bit of a hard act to follow, as I'm here with 110 pages of engineering design standards. I know people are not quite as excited about this, but I'm excited about this. This is a basic tool that is needed in the toolbox to protect the health of our infrastructure. Our design standards right now were originally adopted in 1994. Excuse me. We had to do some updates to our sanitary sewer and water standards in 2018. Per Eagle, our regulatory, regulatory agency required some updates to our sanitary sewer and water details, so we did those in 18, but otherwise our engineering design standards, that's the little bit of updates that have been done in the last 30 years. So we were here back in April and talked about some of the key things that we were changing, one of them being just on acceptance of new development and adding some additional procedures into that. The second was in stormwater design standards. We were basically updating those. Stormwaters standards have changed a lot in the last 30 years. There's been a lot more involvement from the local Washtenaw area Water Resource Commission, updated their standards in the early 2000s, and then updated them again since. And we're now bringing our standards basically up into the same as the rest of Washtenaw County. The last thing that we talked a little bit about when we were, when we were here last in April was updated road width standards. And after that discussion, we decided that overall, you guys were right, we just, we did, we left them as is. We were, we were at that point, I think, getting really bogged down in a capital project that was coming forward and weren't looking at, like holistically, of what should have been overall for the entire city. So we left them as they were originally, or had been, which is what we will likely see from any new developments that come in, the 32-foot wide roads with parking on one side of the road. So that's really the only major change since we met with you as far as the overall concept, but we did spend a lot of time updating all of the materials, the details to current specifications. And I guess I have with me here tonight from OHM, consulting firm, Sally Boss and Marcus McNamara helped a lot, and they're both here, if we have any questions tonight, to open the floor for questions.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate your work on this, Engineer Humphris, and Sally and Marcus, thank you for your assistance as well, and we appreciate you, you being here this evening. I'm very impressed, Engineer Humphris, with the turnaround on this. As you indicated, you, you had presented conceptually this initiative in, in April, and now we're here at the end of December approving it. To an outsider, that might seem like a significant period of time, but if you take a look at this document in its totality, and I did again today on documents on demand, it was, it was most of the actual packet. So this is pretty comprehensive, very detailed, very thorough. I'm very much in favor of, of both acknowledging receipt and adopting the document this evening. I did have a brief conversation with the city manager in advance of tonight's meeting, and I'd either like to get consensus from the group or offer this language as an amendment, which would be to instruct staff to present these design standards, if approved, to the planning commission in the first quarter of 2024, because that, that body will be directly impacted by these, by these, by these standards. And I think they, they deserve to know kind of the history of where we were and why we moved in this direction, and what sort of impact they're going to have on, on future developments and projects that, that they review. So I'm assuming there would be no objection to that.
Maybe hackers do that, yes.
I think it's critically important to, to make sure that that group is, is knowledgeable on, on the changes.
Yep, okay.
Are there questions or comments? Councilmember Gearbot?
Just could you update us on how this will be communicated to all our developers, and where are we in stages with them in terms of when this becomes effective, how this will be implemented, and so forth?
So, well, it will be updated on our website. So right now, on our website, on the engineering website, there is a link to our existing standards. But in addition to that, one of the things that Community Development Director Ben Harrington has done is doing a really good job of doing these pre-submital meetings when new developments come in, and we've already attended, I want to say, I've already sent these out in draft form to probably at least three petitioners, because we're talking, because they're going to likely fall into the future of the stormwater, and, and they really want to get their hands on those design calcs to do it right the first time. So in that sense, I think the pre-submital meeting is a great tool that we've been utilizing to get the word out on that we're looking at updating our standards.
What do you feel is the most major change that has happened as a result of this new standards that will impact this? Is it the stormwater or?
The stormwater and the, the inspection of new infrastructure when it's, before it's accepted by the city. That's the other big change. So I, I feel very strongly that to get healthy infrastructure, we should have someone on our behalf inspecting the infrastructure before we accept it as public. And so that's outlined in section one of these new standards, and that's, I think, the biggest change, one of the, the other biggest change besides the stormwater calcs.
And with these standards, are there any sustainability issues that you've brought forward that we hadn't done in the past that you can think of?
Well, I think we officially solidified some of the best management practices, like with stormwater management. And we, my understanding is that we would accept two best management practices in lieu of, for small increases in a previous area, so we kind of solidified some of those in this document that weren't just, I think, in practice, but not actually in writing before.
Thank you. I just want to appreciate your work that's been on this, because I know from a planning perspective, there was some surprise at how old some of our standards were. We know we're not the only community like this, but being the fact that we brought these up to fail, up to speed and some other things in this community between you and Mr. Harrington, we will be moving forward with a lot more, I think, confidence in what developers are expecting of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions for the city engineer or comments? Mayor Protem Dillon?
Thank you. Just for clarification, the standards that we're adopting, are they a national standard? Is this a document that we created by and for ourselves, or are they pieces of, of other standards?
A little bit of both, actually. So for the stormwater, we talked a lot about that. We pulled a lot of pieces from Washtenaw County Water Resource Commission. And when it came to like materials and road pavement and cross-section and the, the sand that is used as the base under the road, a lot of that refers to MDOT standards, and we updated that to comply with MDOT standards. When it comes to our sanitary sewer and water, that's probably the item that has the least I counsel to follow, so we pieced together what we are currently doing in practice. So for instance, in water main, we are now allowing plastic pipe. That is something we touched on when we were here back in April, before we only allowed ductile iron pipes. So we put into practice what the testing standards and what I would call industry standards for our water and sanitary sewer. So a little bit of a piecing together of all those different components.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Any additional questions or comments from the dais? Let me start with Mr. Gearbot. Mr. Gearbot, would you be amenable to, again, deviating slightly from strict Roberts rules of order, would you be willing to accept an amendment? So the motion would then read, "To acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Engineer Humphris and to adopt the 2023 engineering design standards and to instruct staff to present the said design standards to the planning commission in the first quarter of 2024."
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Seo as the secondor, would you accept that additional language?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we will include that without objection. Everyone clear on the additional language? Okay, then I'll call for a vote. It's been properly moved by Gearbot, seconded by Seo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Engineer Humphris. Moving on to the final action item under new business is 23-253, resolution number 23-253, to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Manager O'Toole and to adopt or not to adopt resolution number 23-253 on city council rec center memberships.
Move to acknowledge?
Moved by Dillon to acknowledge. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamira Sulek. City Manager O'Toole, would you like to begin?
Certainly. So this resolution arose out of our most recent work session regarding the rec center. Obviously, during that time, we identified a need to continue to try and grow our ambassador network, and in doing so, we're interested in expanding the current discounts that are available to staff to seated members or incoming members of the city council. This was the first crack of the language, so if there's language tweaks that you'd like to see in this, please feel free to let me know.
Very good. Questions for the city manager? Councilmember Gearbot?
How is this different than what we had done in the past? I remember when I had gotten memberships, it was always like a discounted value that was equivalent to what the employees had always got.
This would be the same, the same discount, the exact same application.
Make it official.
Yep.
Additional questions for the city manager? Mayor Protem Dillon?
It's just, the timing for me for this doesn't work, just because we're, we're asking the public for, for an increase, and then we're saying, oh, by the way, you know, we're going to, all of our current and past mayors are going to get free lifetime memberships, council's going to get discounted memberships, staff gets discounted memberships, but everybody else, you pay full price plus. So for me, I'm struggling with that a bit right now, because I don't think I need an incentive to be an ambassador. I mean, I love my community, and, you know, there's always going to be things that, you know, maybe is not obviously my first priority, or at the top of my list of something, but I'm still going to put forth the effort for it. And so I don't want people to think that we have to be bought in order to support something, or if we don't support it, that we don't support the rec center.
Well, certainly, a membership is discretionary. It's, it's structured in a way, similar to staff. We don't pay for every staff member to have a membership. It's only those who are interested in participating.
Councilmember Rice?
I just want to express my opinion that this is great. So I had, I was one of the ones that had expressed concerns during our meeting last week, that as not a member of the rec center, I don't feel comfortable with promoting all of the activities. I mean, I can go on the website and read it off, and I can say you should be a member of the rec center, but if I'm not a member of the rec center, I might use, I feel like it's a little bit of a false push to get people to join the rec center. So if there's an incentive for me to join the rec center, I can get a good feel for it, you know, it's just kind of like marketing one-on-one. I feel like I can, you know, talk in a more educated manner, and I can invite people to join me for classes and things of that nature. So, so I will fully admit this, this request came from me, and, well, it didn't officially come from me, but the, the suggestion came from me, and I fully support it, and I will get my buns to that rec center, and I will speak educated when I encourage folks to join me one-on-one at the rec center.
Very good. Additional comments from the dais? Mr. Seo and then Mr. Kamira Sulek, and I'll jump back to Mr. Gearbot.
Just, I'm in league with Councilwoman Rice. I've long been a member of the rec center, and I've been able, I think, to claim a retiree discount. So my wife said, you better make sure that this rec center keeps working the way it has, because it's an integral part of the community, it's part of the fabric of the community, and we need it. So I intend to vote in favor.
Mr. Kamira Sulek?
Yes. I fully support this, this endeavor. Question, is this common for other recreation centers? Do we know?
I could do a little bit more research. I certainly know that extending staff discounts is, is extremely common. Most rec centers offer reduced or free membership to staffs. I could look more into whether that's extended to council members as well.
All right. Well, I, I had a feeling that it probably was for staff, so I don't see this as really being anything less than ambassadors to increase the buzz and talking about the rec center and upping the memberships and just the programs, if you would talk about the swimming programs and, and everything else that it, that it offers. So I, I will be fully supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gearbot?
As my concern was, and it's still on this agenda, I feel giving a lifetime membership to mayors isn't appropriate. It's just not a thing that we extend to full council, and there's individuals on council that served many, many, many years, so unfortunately, I won't be supporting this resolution for that, for that reason. Thank you.
I do just want to clarify, this does not, this is not a resolution for the mayoral lifetime membership. That was, that was a 1990 resolution.
I know, but in this one, it refers to it, whereas by resolution, it's like, it's continuing that concern, and I don't know if that's supposed to have been in this resolution as just a referral, or if it's?
It's just as a referral, so it's not, I mean, certain, we can strike that line if it, if it is bothersome. It's not meant to further embolden the resolution that was previously adopted.
I would like that to be struck, and the mover would accept that.
I would actually prefer, I mean, obviously, the majority of council can do as they please. I would, for all first, we're just acknowledging receipt at the moment, then there'll be a subsequent motion to adopt or not to adopt. I would prefer to see this come back. I have no problem substantively with what, what is presented here this evening. I do concur somewhat with Mr. Gearbot. I think it's probably unfair, not equitable, moving forward to provide mayors, somebody who serves in this capacity for two or three years, or for, or however long, a lifetime membership at the rec center. So the language, I guess I would be looking for is, again, what's fair is fair. I think we have some previous mayors who were, who were promised something, council took action on that. I would be inclined to grandfather them in, but including myself and all future mayors, they would just receive the same benefit that, that council receives, which is while they're in office, they would get a reduced rate. Mr. Seo?
If I might respond to you, Mr. Mayor, I, I politely disagree with your position on that. I think that as a mayor, I've seen you put in many, many, many hours, I think above and beyond what we as council even do, even the most, even the most ambitious of the council members, and I think that, that you're paid a pittance for the time that you spend, and that this is just one of the possible ways to remunerate you in a small way for the kind of work you do. So, and, and for the number of folks that it involves, maybe two or three or four at the most, I don't think it's, that's substantial a matter.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Seo. If there's no additional discussion, we do have a motion on the floor simply to acknowledge receipt. It's been moved by Dillon, seconded by Camara Sulek. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to adopt, not to adopt Resolution Number 23-253 on City Council Rec Center memberships?
I would move to adopt.
Moved by Seo to adopt. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by, I'll let Delorko be the second and get you on the next one. Mr. Camara Sulek, is there any additional discussion on the motion? There is none. All those in favor of a motion to adopt, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Nay.
Nay? I think that's, raise your hands if you're a yea. Were you a yea?
I was a yea.
Okay, yep. So that motion carries four to three. Thank you very much. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. We only have one item, which is reports, committee announcements and any other thing that pertinent that you would like to share. Let me start to my left and I'll end to my right. Councilmember Rice, any items that you'd like to bring forward tonight under the discussion portion of our agenda?
I just want to commend my colleagues, Mr. Delorko and Mr. Camara Sulek for your years of service here on council. I'm sure we will continue to work with you all in the future. I thank you for serving with me in my first year in council and guiding me in multiple capacities as I figured out my comings and goings around here. And that's all that I have for today. Thank you guys so much.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Rice. Councilmember Delorko?
Nothing substantive report. The Environmental Commission did meet last week, however, we did not have a quorum, so we weren't able to move forward with our agenda. So we just kind of did a check-in and discussed some things for future meetings and that was it. There was no code review task force, although I do see one listed for December 20th. Is that actually happening, Ben, or is December canceled too?
December is canceled. I think I sent out another email about that.
Okay.
I will send. There's a lot of boards and commissions and none of them are meeting this month.
So there's no, there hasn't been a code review committee meeting for some time, but hopefully that resumes in January.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Delorko. Councilmember Girba, any reports or announcements?
Yeah, this past week, the risk management group met for its quarterly meeting and we were at opportunity to meet with Mr. Shank, our IT director. Fortunately, we brought up to speed on some items that are now not as high a risk as what we thought before. There's still concerns related to cybersecurity, especially with some of the recent attacks that have occurred. We will probably be presenting something to council shortly in the next, in the first quarter of the new calendar year, and then hopefully we'll be able to discuss how the progress is working on that. Planning did not meet this month. We met about to discuss the planning earlier in the month, but, I mean, the master plan, excuse me, but other than that, we'll probably have something in the first weeks of January. And then lastly, I want to again thank the community for all their participation at Rentschler Farm Christmas. We had a great turnout and there were a number of individuals that we hadn't seen in the past. So we were very appreciative of our community and I think everybody loves seeing the place decked out for the holidays. So thank you again.
Very good. Mayor Portem Dillon, any reports or announcements?
Thank you. Earlier in December, the fire board met and it's got a couple of big items that are lingering on its agenda. And so we're looking forward to working through that. Its next meeting will be in February as it only meets every other month. So I will, as it gets closer, I will be posting the date for that meeting. Urban County has met, continues to meet monthly. It is actually going to be going into in-person meetings coming up in the beginning of the year. It's been virtual for three years now, I think. So it'll be interesting to see people from all of our surrounding communities actually in person. They are in full swing right now with winter programs and there are vast resources through the county. There are shelters available, day shelters, there are evening shelters available, there are warming spots, and there are a lot of programming. And one specifically that I want to mention is a winterization assistance program. And the reason I'm mentioning this, it does help with furnace replacements and ceiling air ducts and things like that. The big difference in that program right now is in 2023, excuse me, annual household income limits by household have been increased. So now they are 80% of the area median income. So that's based on where you live. So like in our community, it's a much higher threshold. So we would have more people that would qualify. If it's something that you're interested or would like further information about, please don't hesitate to reach out to me via email or you can call my city line. Thank you.
Councilmember Seo, any reports or announcements?
Yes, Your Honor, I have two. This morning, the Celine Area Senior Center Council or Board met with the school representatives to talk about the, how the school bond, recent school bond is going to affect the senior center. Called for enhancements in the senior center area. As such, I was asked if I would sit on a committee to meet with the schools and their engineering design firm again on January the 17th at 9:00 a.m. to further those discussions about what kind of improvements would be made to the Celine Area Senior Center. The second one is that on January the 7th, which is a Sunday, beginning at 1:30, there's going to be a Celine Brecken Sister City meeting here in this room. And on the 7th at 3:00 p.m., following the Brecken meeting, there'll be the meeting of the Celine Lindenberg Sister City Committee. So anybody who's interested in learning more about the sister cities, please come on Sunday, January the 7th to this room, either at 1:30 or 3:00 or both if you want, to learn more about the sister city relationships and coming activities during the following year.
Very good. Councilmember Camara Sulek, any reports or announcements?
Yes, thank you. So the Arts and Culture Committee met last week and there's a lot of talk about Jazz in the Park for next summer and all the interest for the event to grow and to be more expansive and have more parking. So we were looking at that in more depth. The DEI Committee met and discussed new members coming on and tradition, transition to new leadership. And tomorrow, the Celine Youth Council meets and it will be sad that that'll be my last meeting with them. And they always have a lot of great ideas for volunteering and really being active in the community. I find them to be very inspiring, so sadly, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Camara Sulek. And on that note, again, I'll reiterate, we have many Board and Commission openings for 2024. So if you're interested or you know somebody who would be of particular benefit to a board or commission, please encourage them to contact the city clerk's office or fill out the application online. Staff and I will be meeting about Board and Commission appointments this Wednesday, and then most of our Board and Commission appointments will be made at our first meeting in January on the 8th. If there are no additional discussion items, we proceed then to the second public comment period under the Open Meetings Act. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I had a question.
Oh, please.
Is there an update on the status of the hotel? I mean, it's looking better and better. Do we, do we know where it's at, like an ETA for its opening?
Yeah, we're trying to schedule some tours for council members and department heads. Mr. Harrington may have spoken to the partners and leadership more recently than I have. The last message that I received was probably two or three weeks back with a anticipated opening date sometime in March or April of 2024. But you may have more recent information.
I don't have any further update on that, unfortunately.
Okay. We can try to provide something, though, at our first meeting in January. Thank you, Mr. Camara Sulek.
Yeah, that's very encouraging. It'd be really something for that hotel to open.
Starting to look very nice.
Yes.
Mr. Seo?
Speaking of updates, what about the closing of the property on Two Sideman Road?
To my knowledge, the closing still has not been scheduled yet.
Correct. We're, the last due diligence item on that checklist is submittal of permit materials to Eagle. So we're just wrapping that up with our consultant engineers.
But I talked to Mr. Berry last week and you sent him an email, I think, on Friday.
Yes, we're meeting right after the new year to discuss.
So again, probably early January, we'll be able to give you an idea of when the closing is scheduled.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, we're at the second public comment period now under the Open Meetings Act. Any person may come forward and comment, make comment or question the city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but of course not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess. And I was looking at the Rec Center. When I first was elected in 91, we made, the council made $300 a year and the mayor was made $600 a year. And I had tried through the senior center years ago to have us get involved in silver slippers and nobody seemed to want to pick it up. It seems that the numbers are very important as far as when you have 20 people are signed up, that the rate can go down. My rate has went continuously up since it's opened up and I assume from what I'm reading that the rates are going up again for membership. But is that, as far as council, doesn't matter as far as I'm going to be 85, but, so I have a senior rate. But is there any way that they could part as count, as part of a, for a lower rate, either at the senior center or as a former? But I would hope that, I know Jack's on the senior board and I think me or you are too, as far as the silver slippers, because we do have the A and B Medicare, most of us do. And so that could be something to look into, please. Thank you. And thank you also for serving and giving to the city your time and your thoughts and your interest in your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments on, actually, they don't need to be on agenda items. You can make any comment you want at this time. Go ahead, Chang Min.
Good evening. I rise again, raise my voice and raise my hand. Salute to all of you, especially Jim.
Kevin?
I know, it's hard. He's not trying.
Kevin's.
So, so. And since CDD, Mr. Harrington, the reason I rise again and talk about this, not just wonderful master plan, is remind me Thomas Jefferson, the writer, but also it is the guideline. Now, we are turning our page to January 29th is going to be strategic plan. I hope more people will come over here to listen, to set the future, not just five years, not this generation, but also many, many years from now. There are so many things is strategically important and actually is critical. The things change. Not only the world change, we might have another virus, but more importantly is the war, the damage of this planet and also competition of the AI. How we're going to do, how Celine can march forward to the 21st century, not only lead this area, but probably the entire state and how US can continue to be the leader. I think those strategies so important, so many topics. I can just talk forever, but I don't have another two minutes left or left.
You've got 1 minute and 17 seconds.
Oh, my God, this time is so fast. But again, this is so important. As our leader here, we elect them, they devoted their most dedicated people, but they cannot stay here forever. And I think we should really consider strategically how we can rebuild Celine. What I mean, the rebuild Celine, look back of the city seal, the tree, the founding father come over here, not that much, but now we have so many trees. How did the tree come from? How did it grow? Environment, besides the DEI, there is another term, look at the ESG, environment, what is it, sustainability and governance. So this is a lot of resistance against this. So we have to really address the issue, talk about AI, how the city level, we can build our own language and then to do the job much, much, much easier and also finally solve again, Celine Area Light Tower. I want to emphasize ALT, Area Light Tower. DOT is Detroit Area Light Tower. So as R, A, 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 L, T, and our area will be more, will be higher. So how are we going to do that? This is related with the strategically correct or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Chang Min. Are there any additional citizen comments on agenda items this evening? Actually, I keep saying that, I'm a verbal tick tonight. They do not need to be on agenda items. You can speak about whatever it is you'd like to speak about. You have three minutes. No additional comments from the audience. Clerk Royal, any written comments in advance of tonight's meeting in which the individual wanted their remarks read at this time? Easy enough. And if there's nothing further to be brought forward to city council this evening, I guess I would humbly ask that our outgoing members make a motion and second a motion to adjourn this regular meeting at 8:04 p.m.
So moved.
Moved by Camara Sulek. Mr. Delorko, would you like to second?
Second.
Okay. Then seconded by Councilmember Delorko. All those in favor of adjourning at 8:04 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
One of the shortest meetings ever.